That we don't, we just need somebody seasonal.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I think so.
I know they don't need to, I know they don't need to be salary, but they need to be hourly.
Only issue, I, I, I don't have a problem with that. Only the issue I have with that Danny is it's gonna, it's gonna be hard to find someone that's, that's gonna be a seasonal worker for, you know, for that.
Almost part-time kind of seasonal.
Yeah. Uh, I do have someone that showed interest. I did do a criminal background on him and he lives in Cretton. And, uh, you know, my, my question is with all the complaints that we have coming in, I have anything from ghetto fences to apartment complexes and the way that their entrances are and need to be cleaned up and so forth. I'm trying to think of some of the others I have. I have one on Shady Lane. I have several on Greenview. I have, I have some here on Main Street complaints and some in the Harvesters. Uh, I just feel like, you know, do we work off of the, uh, and this might be a question for Attorney Alex, I believe I've already spoke to you about this once. The, uh, operational nuisance that we have right now, uh, it does have fees added on to it. We sure don't wanna give fees, but if the public knows that we're not gonna be serious about this, then they're not gonna clean up their property and they're not gonna follow guidelines. But if we can pull together as a team to say, hey, you know, uh, there can be something done about it, um, you know, can we go ahead and hire a code enforcement, uh, seasonal code enforcement officer and start, start addressing some of these complaints from the citizens?
Mayor, we've already had, um, what, four code enforcement officers? Is it four? Three or four?
Yes, absolutely.
And I just don't see where that's, we've, we've really improved anything by throwing out that salary. I think we need to come up with another way. That's just my opinion. I, I'll leave it up to the rest of you guys.
Well, I, I think the reason we've lost so many code enforcement officers is because council can't set a pay and stick with it. Another reason we've lost so many code enforcement officers is because as soon as they get hired, council starts wanting to cut their pay.
I believe their pay thing just came up last month.
Plus, we can't pass a nuisance ordinance that we're really sink our teeth into to get this moving.
And going by the public that have read the nuisance ordinances, they weren't real happy with them.
Well, going by the public I talked to, they're really pissed off because the nuisance ordinance didn't get passed and we've got stoves and tires and pallets sitting all over the place.
Here's the issue, there's an ordinance on the website that is in place, but the people think because it didn't get passed last time, that amended the ordinance, that there is no ordinance. And so they're starting to put up, uh, what was that complaint? Megan ghetto fences and, and doing things with their property that, uh, that we, you know, that we can't, um, that, that I'm, I'm kinda up in the air of, of how to address these things.
Hey, have you talked to people about the complaints?
I mean... Yes, yeah.
Well, couldn't a letter just come from the city on these fences that you're talking about? And just...
You're wanting to put the, the code enforcement job on, on the mayor, um, and the, and the clerk?
I'm talking about a, a letter.
How was it, how was it handled in the past, Megan?
She did everything, I can answer that.
Yeah, I think, I think some of, a couple of the other council and, and maybe even, uh, Mayor Livinggood made phone calls, uh, went out on...
To Purcell?
Yeah, a, and Purcell and just, and, uh, Livinggood both, you know, just tried to talk to the people. You know, you gotta be really careful and I, I don't know how to say this nicely, but, you know, you, you can't go walking on people's property and telling them, you know, you're not gonna do this and you're not gonna do that. You, you gotta be, there's a fine line there and, and, yeah, you know, we, I want that Hallmark bill, you know? I, I wanna live in Hallmark bill. I want beautiful streets. I want, I want all these things for our city. But you gotta be really careful because people, especially today, people are violent. They're, they have violent tendencies. It's like, I don't even know the word. You know, they soon take your head off, just look at you over certain things. And, and I think that's one of them, you know? They're paying their mortgage and they're paying their property taxes, county tax, all these things. And we just gotta be really careful.
That's right, and I agree with that, but we, we, we don't handle it that way. Uh, we have been in the past. I don't know about the last code enforcement officer. I don't think that his social, social skills was as good as it ever did. But what we do is we let, we leave the car, they call back in and most of the time they straighten things out. That's what code enforcement officers do. If not, they send a letter, then they send another letter. It might've said final notice, but that was something that we, we tried to use for people we would even have to do.
And I, I get that, you know? I, I totally get that. And we, you know, we live in the streets, we try to keep things cleaned up and done everything and some of our neighbors, you know, they've got cars they're redoing and, and there's things out beside their house, but you're trying to keep things within, you know? I just feel like we, we need to put our heads together. We really need to come up with another way of going around this. And I know we need a code enforcement. I get it. I lived in the Harvesters, I know. Uh, you know, eh, eh, there is, Paula, I, I totally get it. I know, I've seen mattresses beside their houses and, you know, it's just like...
You know, the thing about, the thing about it is, is it's not the houses. It's really not the houses. It's the apartment complexes down the street. I can go to the left here and there's a stove that, now that's been sitting out there for five frigging days. I mean, it, a stove, y'all.
Well, then somebody needs to contact the, you know, the owners of these places, you know? The landlords, the people who own these places and, and that's where you need to start, you know, which I'm sure we are, if we can, you know?
And that someone is who?
You know, like I said, Purcell and Livinggood did before. I, you know, I don't know the answer to this question. I really don't. I, 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 I have scratched my head, I don't know. I really don't. I get we need a code enforcement, but...
Anybody on council want to, want to take that job on? I mean...
I'll take it. Yeah, I'll ta, I'll take that job. I'm tired of looking at this crap sitting around these apartment buildings.
Well, we can't do that, Jen. Or, I'm sorry, well, here.
You can't, you can't do that.
You can't do it, Paula. You're the, you're the legislation, legislative wing of the government. So the executive authorities with the mayor and, and employees. I wish you could, but we can't.
Right.
How did Jim, how did Purcell get by with that, being code enforcement?
Just, I guess he just knew people and he just talked nicely to them, you know? He went and he talked to them.
He didn't talk nicely to them. He, he, he tried to charge, charge them a hundred dollars a day. Well, let's...
If we've got the, I don't wanna start a big argument on this, but if we've got JD going around on the streets, he's gonna be able to take down an address. And if nothing else, it could fall under public relations to write a letter. That's all that needs to be done. At least give that a, a sample run and see what happens.
So you wanna give more hours to the public relations? Donna, you wanna say anything about this? Donna Dooley? No? Okay. All right, we'll work out something. Uh, Alex, on that, that present ordinance, is that anything that we can, we can go to court on if we absolutely have to? It's not, I don't see it happening, but...
Right, we can, we can, we can do the best we can, Judge, Judge. Mayor, keep saying Judge, I've been in meetings all day with judges. Mayor, uh, we could do, we could certainly do the citation. The question is, is that what happens when it's prosecuted? I mean, you need the buy-in from the county attorney, Mr. Bates. Um, the, the reason a lot of that has shifted away is being seen it, you could put names on people's properties, it's a more efficient way, 'cause judges are sympathetic. Every time we try to prosecute these cases and as a statutory, why they can't, or if they're here on, on a city street, can't walk in or they're gonna have it right closer house than yard. But I mean, we can absolutely try. I mean, it doesn't hurt to try. Uh, happy to write, you know, letters, whatever needs to be done. But ultimately, it's gonna come down as how do you enforce it? You really need the buy-in from, from the judges, of the district court judges, really? 'Cause that's really what most of these fines are about, and the county attorney to prosecute.
I, uh, I can, uh, share with you, Mayor, that, um, as an assistant prosecutor in Campbell County, very rarely, in the entire county of Ca, of Campbell, the whole county, do I see these fine, uh, mechanisms. The reason being is that you're just, you, it's a lot of work to try to get somebody to pay seventy-five bucks.
Right, right. And I think the majority of people, if, if they know that we're sticking together as a team and we're, they're not being told they're not gonna be any, any kind of, uh, stipulation of, of, of what they have to do, then maybe they will, they will do what they have to do, you know? Not go out and say, well, we have this ordinance, it really is not gonna, it's not, they're not gonna do anything to you. You know, the city's not gonna prosecute or, or take you to court or the hearing officer or what have you. But if, 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 if you guys could stick together, you know, us stick together as a team, you know, we could, we could possibly get the work done without having to even hire somebody, you know? Uh, maybe pay Donna a few, some hours extra if she would be willing to do that.
I don't... I mean, I don't wanna send a letter that was my name on them, I mean...
That's the problem.
I have power that they're gonna listen to me.
All right. We'll think of something.
Uh, well, I just have a question. If Donna's already got all of the, uh, ordinances and everything put on, um, the website, is this something she, that she would have time to do now? Well, I mean, I'm not sure what all she do's, does, we don't have a job description for. Well, I stay on Facebook quite a bit and it's pretty. And I need, if I need to get on there at ten o'clock at night, then I do. And, uh, you know, I don't...
You, you don't, you don't work in...
No, I, I'm sorry, Donna, I wasn't asking you. I was just asking the mayor if there would be time. I, I don't know, we don't know what you do, so...
Let's move, let's move on. We'll think of something. Um, the beautification committee will be meeting June sixteenth at ten AM at the city building. Anybody that's, that's on the beautification or want to be on the beautification committee, there's a meeting with Jamie Baker, uh, on June sixteenth at ten AM at the city building. Is there anything else that you guys wanna bring up? I'm sure Alex is waiting on that stake out there.
Well, I'm going around the...
I do have one question if, uh, Ken Brockman is still on there. I saw him a minute ago. Uh, on your, uh, proposed budget for the EMS, it was eighty-two thousand?
Right.
Is, is that, is that the, uh, what I wanna call the, is that a hard number? Yes, we're, that's where we're at and that we've got an agreement on this?
That's what they agreed to back in March when I had a meeting with, uh, Chief Rodney Smith and Mayor Brockman.
Did they give you any papers? 'Cause I'm, I, we have, I'm documenting papers, I'm happy, about the agreement of the cost and what they're gonna probably do.
They don't have the agreement on anything, uh, at hand, any. Uh, they, they have to clean up some things through Frankfurt on the local, uh, their local agreement and then get that over to us and, and have the other cities and the judge executives sign. Uh, there's a...
But they haven't brought it over, they haven't brought it over to your agreement yet?
No, no.
Still working on it. We're trying to schedule a meeting between anybody now.
Anything else, council, attorney? No, any, anything for, anything from the public that, uh, would like to...
Mayor, this is Ken Little. Did, did any of your council have questions? I'm, I'm sorry, I, I thought I heard they had a question on the EMS number.
Yes. I was just interested to know if the eighty-two thousand was the dead set number and that's, you're comfortable with that for the year?
Uh, eighty-two thousand was a proposed number back in probably January or February. Um, I had a working document that, that I had given to the mayor. Uh, I had the number at one twenty-two, three oh seven ninety-three would be Cretton's portion for the new agreement.
Uh, Mr. Little, you was not at that meeting the day that Chief, uh, Chief Rodney Smith came in and Mayor Brockman? And they had agreed to, uh, the eighty-two as I did to bring it before council. That was in March. And, um, as far, as far as the numbers, I would like to relate to council. We wanna look at that a little bit closer because there's addresses on those runs that don't exist. And, and we wanna reach out there to make sure that's in the city limits of Cretton. Now, we're talking about the, the city, city taxpayers, you know? We need to look at it a little bit closer to make sure that, uh, these people are getting in service in some of those calls.
Uh, Mayor, you're absolutely right. I was not in that meeting that you had with Rodney, uh, or Mayor Brockman. And I do apologize for that, I was probably out of town. Uh, but I did give you a revised document on the fifteenth of April. It included the new number, uh, the projected number that we were working for to try and get, uh, to get a resolution for the, the total funding of the EMS.
That's your number, okay? We, we need to reach out. We're, we're getting ready to send a survey out to the people of the city of Cretton to see what kind of response that they give back to us as far as regards to EMS services and if they were, uh, those runs were actually legit. And we wanna look in to see where the, just because of the four-ten-thirty zip code doesn't mean that that's in the city limits of Cretton. So there needs to be some things looked into as, as far as the leader of, of the city and the, and the mayor. I wanna make sure that the city of Cret, Cretton is getting the service that they're paying, paying, uh, out of the EMS service.
Well, Mayor, I will add that I have not received, the city of Dry Ridge has not received one complaint about the Dry Ridge EMS to this point.
Could you take, could you give me that number one more time? I've got the one twenty-two...
One twenty-two, three hundred seven dollars ninety-three cents.
Now, is that with cap?
That is a contractual amount that would be, uh, con, entered into an interlocal agreement between the city of Dry Ridge.
I'm asking about a cap. Is there a cap on that?
No, ma'am. There is no cap. There, there's, it's a contractual agreement. It's a contractual amount. We will provide EMS service until June thirty of twenty, twenty-one for that contractual amount of one twenty-two, three hundred seven ninety-three.
So then it, it does have a cap. It will not go any higher than that?
No, sir, it will not. It's a contractual amount. We're entering into an agreement for that amount.
I have a question, Ken.
Yeah.
This is Jennifer.
Uh-huh.
What happens if we, uh, pass a budget with the proposed eighty-two thousand? Are you all gonna be able to make up the difference or...
No, ma'am.
Or bill at that time?
I'm sorry, a little confused on the or billing, I'm sorry. We'll talk about that.
No, Danny.
That, I think that's something we'll talk about in executive session, that, that specific term. It was good.
So Ken, uh, uh, what is the status of the other, uh, communities, um, that you've talked to as far as covering their portion of it?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, Corrent, I spoke with Corrent, Mayor, today, Amy. Uh, she has agreed to pay the, uh, the amount, um, from last year's amount. Now, of fifty-six ninety-five ten. Uh, the city of Williamstown has agreed to pay one thirty-one, six forty-three twenty. Uh, the county has agreed to a, a contractual amount of one eighty-eight, zero fifty, forty-one.
Can I ask the question? Maybe this is irrelevant, but how many, um, persons are, are there in Williamstown? Does anyone know that? How many residents are in Williamstown?
The population, I don't know.
Pretty close to us, Paula.
Are they? I don't know.
They don't have as many as Cretton.
All the contractual numbers are based on the run volume and we're all seeing that each one of our communities.
And what was our run numbers for last year?
Um, I don't have the total up until June, but, uh, when I did the survey, it was two hundred and ninety-five.
What month did you pull those numbers?
Uh, this was done in, in April.
So from July until April, it was only two ninety-five?
Yes, sir. Two ninety-five in Cretton, two eighty-four in Williamstown, four twenty-four in the county, four twenty-eight in the city limits of Dry Ridge, twenty-one in Corrent.
So Ken, if we, if we don't, uh, come through with the amount that you all need, what is gonna happen to, uh, the Cretton patients who need that service? If we pay the eighty-two thousand, will we still get service?
Absolutely, you're gonna receive service. But this, this is only designed to, to offer us a, a coverage that we obviously all need, uh, at the one twenty-two rate. Uh, I, we would certainly would not wanna see any kind of decline in service. So I would, I would, I would hope that, uh, that the council and the mayor would seriously consider, uh, the one twenty-two, three oh seven ninety-three.
And did you say that was, uh, two hundred and ninety-five runs?
In, in ten months? Or am I getting the, the months wrong?
No, no, sir, that's, that, that is, that is since June, or excuse me, since July of last year of nineteen, to the current date, which was April fifteenth when I pulled this data, we had around two, two hundred and ninety-five runs.
That's only about...
In the city of Cretton.
That's only about ninety-four thousand dollars. If it's three sixteen a run?
Yes, ma'am, but, but that was until April. So we had to run May and June numbers. We had to do a projection and we used the four-month average of the last four months to come up with that average number based on the run volume that we had been seeing. So...
Did we use, I don't know where all this background's at, but...
I know.
For last year's contract, didn't we use a number like six or seven hundred?
We used a number of three fifteen per run.
No, 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 I mean, total runs for the year, wasn't it between six and seven hundred runs?
City of Cretton, I, I, I don't think so.
Megan? Megan? Is there any way we can find out how many runs those were set on last year? The EMS contract?
Yeah, we can get it together. All right. Uh, Ken, we, we definitely wanna do our part in Cretton and I'm, I'm speaking, I'm sure, for the council also. We just wanna, we just wanna see the run volume, uh, a little closer and that's all. We probably do need to go into executive session, council, in regards to this. Uh, possibly when we meet in July. We can call a special, a special meeting, uh...
Obviously, we're, we're, uh, we're trying to build our budget here in Dry Ridge, uh, so we would, uh, we would like to see, uh, the agreement between Dry Ridge and Cretton ironed out much longer, much before July. We, we, we need to know. We need to be at the crown of these revenues in Dry Ridge to build our budget.
Well, that's understandable.
Yes, it is.
Is there any, is there any possibility we could call a special meeting, uh, maybe the middle of this month?
Well, that would be totally up to you, Mayor, but we're actually going to special meetings, uh, or we're doing two meetings in the month of June in Dry Ridge, so...
Right. We could have a couple of special meetings and get this passed and get taken here.
Jennifer, um, what I'd like to do is have, have a special meeting together with this and open up the Oakwood project bids, uh, so we can go ahead and get that going, uh, sometime around...
We could also want that special meeting to go over a budget amendment, couldn't we?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking and then we could get it, we could have it passed by the first meeting in, uh, June, July. We'd go ahead and...
Sounds good to me.
What day looks good?
Um, how about the, the twenty-ninth, uh, twenty-ninth or thirtieth of June? Does that work for everybody?
No, uh, can we back that up a week?
Well, the bids for Oakwood aren't finished till the twenty-sixth of June.
God's getting married on the twenty-seventh.
What are you hiding with?
I'm not cutting it short. I'm not cutting it short for that, I'm sorry. It ain't happening.
Can we meet Friday evening, uh, June twenty-sixth? No, 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 you're, you're...
Yeah.
You're getting married on Saturday, right?
Right.
Okay. Can you meet on that Friday evening? Or even during the day?
Sure, we'll have the stripper come to the city building. That'll be, that'll work.
Well, see, I think of an issue, Mayor, to open up the bids for a week after the deadline.
You guys are concerned about the budget and you're concerned, yeah?
I, I can't hardly hear, but I heard something, June twenty-sixth, what time? I have two weddings. I have a wedding that, on the twenty-sixth and one on the twenty-seventh. So I've got two weddings that weekend.
I, I can't meet during the day.
How about, uh...
Yeah.
The twenty-third?
We can meet the twenty-third about the budget and the, um...
Mayor, Dry, Dry Ridge...
And the bids, maybe?
I'm sorry, but Mayor, Dry Ridge's first meeting is on the fifteenth, so we would certainly like to know some kind of answer from the city of Cretton, uh, prior to that. Uh, like I said, again, we're, we're in the process of building our budget as well and we kinda need to know where we stand with the city of Cretton as far as providing the, uh, the service, you know, for this contractual amount.
I'm good for the ninth. That's not a week from today.
I'll be out of commission on the ninth, uh, probably.
Uh... How about the fourth? Two days from now.
How about the twelfth? Twelfth is June. I'll be out of town.
All you really need is twenty-four to forty-eight hours for, to, to notify the public of a special meeting, so...
Right.
We can certainly do another one this week if you so choose.
I, I could meet Friday night this week.
Mayor, it's gonna be hard to meet on a Friday night if we're not gonna get the budget amendments in time. If I want a budget amendment.
I can send you the budget Friday. I can send you the budget amendments tomorrow.
I can't be here Friday night, but Saturday would be...
Anytime after two, I have a wedding on Saturday morning. Pick up at two o'clock.
And I would just like to say, I would be absolutely glad to come to any kind of working meeting or workshop meeting that you might have and explain any kind of numbers that you might have questions to. Uh, I realize this is a large amount of money, but it is a very important service for our community. Uh, I realize this is a large amount of money, but it is a very important service for our community.
What about, um, June, June the 6th, this Saturday? Anybody available?
I could meet if it's early, but, um, I would have to be finished by about 4:00.
Early?
When, when is it? I'm sorry.
3:10 o'clock Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a wedding though. I've got a bid she's picking up at 2:00. So as long as I'm out of there by, yeah, by 1:30.
Is this just for the budget? Is that the only thing gonna be on the agenda? So surely we can get through it within an hour?
Yes. Anything, there was something else we was gonna talk about. What, not your-
The bids?
No, not Oakwood. Was there anything else besides Oakwood?
EMS, EMS.
EMS to open up the bids.
And opening bids, opening bids.
We don't have bids to open. Yeah, we won't have bids to open. We'll have to have another special meeting sometime.
Well, if we have another special meeting, we could go ahead and, and have second reading on the budget.
That's right.
Okay. So this Saturday at 10:00?
10:00 a.m. Is that good?
Is this gonna be an in-person meeting?
I'm out of town, Judge, or Mayor.
Can we go ahead without you, Alex?
Sure. I can call in. Happy to do it.
I would love for it to be an in-person meeting, because I can get your-
Well, it's under, under 10 people, so I think that'd be just fine. Yeah, we'll meet at the city building at 10 a.m.
Alex, I would, Alex, I would, Alex, I would like for you to call in if you could.
I should check. So this Saturday the 6th at 10 a.m.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. We'll get that out. Okay, anything else? We need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I think the guy from Dry Ridge was trying to say something.
Can you say, have something to say?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I was just wondering if, if you in fact wanted Dry Ridge to come to your 10 o'clock meeting on Saturday to, to go over any kind of numbers or any questions.
Counsel?
Yes, please. Yes.
If you're available, if not, uh, just like run numbers and any pertinent information we can use, if you can bring that with you.
Absolutely. We'll see you on Saturday.
See you in Maryland.
Okay, bye, you all. I don't have anything.
Bye, David.
Bye.